I would like to call the meeting to order. Could everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sandy, roll call.
Councilmember Stacy Green.
President.
Councilmember Kim Green.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Hall.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Palafini.
I'm here.
Mayor Susan Tabalero.
I am here. Thank you very much. Non-agenda public comment. So now is the time. If anybody has anything they would like to say that is not on the agenda, can you please come forward? We need your name and address.
Jennifer Dickinson, 16730 Surrodo Court. And this is not on the agenda. It's regarding Measure B. It kind of ties in, but not really. But I want to thank you first of all for having this meeting and giving your time. You've dedicated to the city. Okay, so in the last meeting, I wasn't able to attend, and there was a comment made that Measure B is all about regulating indoor commercial cannabis grows, which I agree. It is about regulating the grows. But there were 171 validated signatures from residential voters that do not want Measure B. Ron Stock stated at one point to me that there already was an ordinance on the books, which I knew about, and that this new ordinance, Measure B, was all about protecting the city. Well, I disagree that there are some provisions in that that do not protect the city. And I'm only going to talk about one, but there are several, including the assignment exception. The ordinance provision that regards educational and entertainment permits will be allowed by your city administrator or manager. You did change, and it used to state just juveniles, which meant that even a third-grade class could go on, but you changed it to 17. The current California law does not allow anyone under the age of 21 on these grow sites. And I understand that you said that they do not regulate educational or entertainment events, but that was one of the reasons why I wanted this ordinance stopped was because I don't think anyone under 21 should be allowed on the premises. Regarding, I have a, and I'm going to run out of time. I have a recording from Ron Stock that is from the March 2019 where he actually talks about how we got to do this right now. We have to do this right now. And the reason is because he had other things on his agenda, and if we didn't do it right now, that the people would not be able to break ground and put the greenhouses in in June. And I have that recording, but I'm going to run out of time. So I just want to state that you were not being transparent about why I had decided this. So I thank you for your time, and I am still endorsing that the voters vote no on Measure B. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy, did we have cards? No. Okay.
I don't know if I'm going to take the whole three minutes.
That's fine. Your name and address.
My name is Isis Whirl, and I live on 242 Spring Lane in Weed. And I came to bring something to everyone's attention that people are probably aware of already, which is why I think I might not take three minutes. And it's about the respiratory endangerment that Roseburg is causing by having huge piles of exposed mulch and sawdust in the yard. Last October, we were members of the community member for a little while, and I also have lived on Broadway. And before we moved to Broadway, I would run maybe five miles, you know, run like, you know, like the footrace running, you know, like outrunning without getting winded, really. I mean, I'd be like, fast heartbeat. We lived there for one year, and after running one mile, I could hear this. I'm not going to go into detail about traumatic events. I know that it's improved a lot over the last, like, 60 years that Roseburg has. And I've heard that 30 years ago, if you put your clothes on the line outside, by the afternoon, they were covered with tar. That's how bad the Superfund was. So I'm just going to propose these two ideas that be talked about and discussed with the administrators of Roseburg, and I think it will save Lincoln Heights, the children of Lincoln Heights, the community center who wants to get out there and do activities and get the park going. And it's the idea that either they sack it with a plastic cover, or that they consider sacking it into small, like, two, oh, like, I don't know, you know, like soil-sized sacks and selling it as garden supply, that they may be able to sell, because people do love that mulch. We all love the really nice fragrance, but it does do damage, and possibly reproductive damage to the young people of Lincoln Heights is what I'm mostly concerned about. Well, there's a small sign that says Prop 65 over by the duck pond way far. We happened to find it one day, and when I phoned them, they said, oh, it's just like cigarettes or coffee. It has to have a Prop 65 warning. And I dreamed about my daughter standing outside with her girlfriend her age smoking a cigarette, and I said, this isn't very cool. And I'm all for, you know, natural forestry, for people doing reforestation and conscious forestry, forestation. But, and I'm not against the lumber mill at all. I know the jobs, the families that it supports. I'm just saying that one little thing, it's gone too far. And I don't think any of the kids want to lose their chance to have kids, or put on a ton of weight, or eat a ton of red meat so that they can try and reproduce, which seems to be happening. They're not having as much chemical sensitivity because they're being obese, or they're eating a lot of red meat, which is kind of really bad for the community, too. So I think that's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hello. Sarah Montgomery, 5734 Antelope Court in Weed. Thank you, guys, for being here. It's been a while since I've seen all of you, probably much to your pleasure. However, there's a few things that I'd like to address that have been weighing heavily on me. The first, it has to do with former city manager Ron Stock, and I understand that there was a domestic violence situation that happened with Mr. Stock and his partner. I have concerns that he was not arrested formally and that charges were not brought, and now he's running for a city council position, and that really bothers me. As a victim of domestic violence, it's very concerning that this was not addressed by the city while he was underneath the employment of the city of Weed in a public manner. Secondly, I would like to address the parks being used right now for youth sports. The CDC clearly states that youth sports offer, or excuse me, impose a high level of risk for full competitions between teams from the same local geographic area, and there's even a higher risk when they consider them to be from different geographical areas. We have children from McLeod, Wyrika, Mount Shasta, and Weed convening in large groups at our city parks, and that is a concern. That was approved by this city, this council, members of this council, and that is concerning to me that this is being promoted. The Parks and Recs district should not be allowing it, just as Mount Shasta banned it from happening this year. It's very disappointing as a mother that we are including additional risks to our kids and thereby the senior and elder members of their families. You have kids that are in school, kids that are about to go back to school, and we're essentially increasing the odds. As most of you are aware, Public Health releases numbers. We have students that are definitely getting COVID-19. Statistics can show that from both Jackson County in Medford, where a lot of the sports travel with the basketball teams, as well as Shasta County, who have both seen a significant increase in recent weeks with the reopening of school and sports programs. Why we are endangering our aging demographic in Weed is beyond me, and it seriously is concerning. Nobody here in this board, on this council, is an infectious disease specialist that supersedes that of the CDC. None of you are doctors, none of you are epidemiologists. And so I, as a mom, am really frustrated that this continues to happen. Several of you choose not to wear masks. That is also concerning. Several people in this room, a city building, not wearing masks. Very concerning. This is a freaking pandemic. A pan-demic. 250,000 Americans have died. Just because we live in Siskiyou County does not make us exempt. Thank you.
Anybody else? Hi, Shane.
How are you?
Name and address.
Shane Phillips, 800 Chastina Drive and 548 Florence.
I'm Rodney Galgiani. Same address.
Okay.
We just wanted to revisit the application, review for the 90-day of the cannabis company. Should be on agenda for next month, and we just wanted to follow through with that, that we kind of walked by the property, make sure that there's kind of seen that, excuse me, that nothing hasn't really been done over there. So we're kind of prosperous that, you know, the application will probably come available, and we just wanted to be ready and, you know, have our application in your guys' hands with application fee as well. Yeah.
Yeah, just want to let you know, Monday morning, we will turn in our application with application fee. And also, just, we all drive down Main Street every day. There's not a lot of activity happening there, not a whole lot of anything, like was said was going to be done. We would like to get a location there, really polish up Main Street, also bring some jobs to our community. As you guys can all see, you can see what it's done for me. A young man in our community who went from, you know, several job prospects to be able to have a life and career now. So you could give that to a lot of other people and good opportunities.
Businesses are closing.
Yeah, we've also lost two businesses on Main Street, and they were big businesses that helped our community tons, which you guys didn't receive tax dollars with, you know? And we are willing to pay a 3% tax rate on our retail. So just a reminder that it could be nothing but good, and our outreach is very good as well. So thank you, guys, for your time and all your hard work.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
Anything that's not on the agenda? Okay. We will move forward. Councilmember announcements, meeting reports, and comments. Stacy, you want to go first?
I do not have anything. Yes, people are talking about the upcoming election, and some people are sharing their thoughts about our different measures that we have on board. So I'm not looking to discuss that, but I hope everyone will vote. Your voice is counted as necessary, and I won't stop saying that until I see 100% voting. And I don't understand why people don't vote and then have a comment on how things are run. You can't talk to me if you don't have them voted. So I still really believe that. So please, vote. Whatever choice you have, your voice is important, needs to be heard.
I agree. Mrs. Green?
I have nothing.
Okay.
You're up, Bob.
You're off. Nothing this month.
No?
No.
Okay.
Nothing to report right now.
Ken?
I do, thank you for your inquiry. I do want to announce that the Resource Center has eggs and 211 boxes for those that are food-challenged. All you have to do is go down there on Thursdays. So if you, not only do they have, I think there's 30 eggs to a flat, so if you go pick one up and your neighbors might need eggs, you can share or divvy them up, however you need.
What's a 211 box?
A 211 box is a meal box. So there is canned food, dry food, stuff that you can actually make a couple meals out of. Okay? Again, it's for those that are food-challenged. In particular, the 211 boxes are, the eggs are there for when you can show up. There are, they get quite a few, and they are being donated by Belcampo. They are also organic. So it's, Belcampo's been giving them to every Resource Center in South Siskiyou. So it's been good.
Nice.
I would also like to chite on with Sarah, and I know I wrote an email the other night. I was up late. We want to talk about that. Regarding, when I came home at about 5:00 o'clock, there was probably 60 to 75 cars at Bel Air Park. I know by the vehicles that we drive and the vehicles that our communities drive throughout Siskiyou County that it does not look like it is our population that is enjoying those feels as much as they should. They were not socially distanced. They were not masked. It was, to me, almost as if it's a super-spreader event. I believe our Park and Rec may not be aware of these people playing in our parks. One, they need to prove liability. At least when I know I did youth sports, we had to provide proofs of insurance for your activities ever going on within whatever park. If we are going to allow activities, we should at least spread those activities with, throughout our parks. We have Lobus Field, we have Charlie Bird Park, and we also have Bel Air Park. There's plenty of space for people to behave themselves. I personally was embarrassed for our city because of it. Every other town has closed their doors to recreational gatherings for kids. Not sure if we need to go that far, but we need to be very cautious so that we are not the people that caused the problem. That's it.
And they did, they did not ask the Recreation Department about that.
I was, I, thank you. I do appreciate that, that at least they need to be aware. They're playing flag football or...
There's a fee for that. There's a fee to use the parks.
And I am following up on it, but I drove by where all these parks were.
I would also indicate that spreading them out, we have big parks here. That's not undoable.
No.
I don't know if it's much safer, honestly, but it's, the appearance would be better. And the parents were just misbehaving themselves. I cannot believe that they were sitting side by side by side by side, rows of them with no masks. I said 1 in 20 in my email. I didn't see any, but I'm sure there was a few out there somewhere.
Well, and they're adults, too, so that's, you know...
But the kids aren't, and the kid, all of the kids were sitting there.
But they're in charge of their kids.
Yeah, anyway.
But they didn't, they aren't paying us the $5 per child fee.
No, we didn't, to my knowledge, the park was not reserved last night.
Right.
It's been going on for two weeks.
Yeah.
And I apologize probably for not getting a hold of you. I do come home late. Last night, I seemed to come home at 5:30 or 6:00, which is early for me, but...
When I was over there a couple weeks ago, they were practicing, but there was one group, one team out there. I mean, there was all of 10 kids.
I have photos. My wife instructed me I should be taking a video instead of a photo because it has a little bit more impact.
And I actually have a Facebook friend whose child plays, but I'm not real sure where she's taken her pictures.
Okay.
Because I, it might be happening in Mount Shasta also.
I don't think they're open.
I don't know.
I don't think the parks, they announced that they were not going to open.
I don't.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I did call the Mount Shasta Rec. They're closed.
Okay. Okay, the only report that I have is Transportation Committee for the county, which we meet next Tuesday, and to remind people that the stage right now is free, and it's free because of what they had going on with the college. And until they run out of that money, they're going to continue to be free. And they do have somebody new on there that is going to be making a new bus route. And that's all I have.
And just to tag on to that, they started off the cover for the bus stop at the community center.
Oh, good. Okay. Moving on to presentations. This is my favorite one. So we have Matt Bauer. He is Director of Business Development for the National, don't say it, Speleological Society.
We'll take that.
Society. Not, I know. Not spelunkers. They are spelunkers, but they're not the spelunker society.
The colloquialism is that cavers rescue spelunkers, but, you know, we don't judge.
Well, or caveman. This is Matt the Caveman.
Madam Mayor, thank you for letting me address the council, members of the council, and City Manager Rundell. I appreciate your time for this audience. COVID-willing, next summer, we are going to add about 30% of your town's population right in the middle of the summer. So my name's Matt Bowers. I'm with the National Speleological Society. We are the world's largest organization dedicated to the study, exploration, and conservation of caves. Now, I'm sure many of you, or probably most of you, have been to lava beds. Within about 50 to 70 miles of here, there are probably over 2,000 caves. Quite a bit. And it's an area of the country that we've been doing a lot of work in for many decades, but we haven't brought our national convention here for about 30 years. Next summer, we're bringing that, again, pandemic-willing, back to Northern California at College of the Siskies. So in all politeness, I didn't want to land another 1,000 people on top of you without coming to the council and telling you who we were, answering any possible questions you might have. We have obviously been working for several months with the college and Richard at the Chamber, and today I met with Tim Rundell and Chief Mayor Berry to go over our preliminary site plans and make sure we're in compliance with city regulations. We do fully expect to pretty much fill every hotel room in town for about eight days and probably some spillover from there. So it's a group of scientists, it's a group of educators, explorers from all of North America, and probably about 14 different countries will be coming to Weed. So we're thrilled to bring this event to town, and certainly, I'm, as a native Californian, I love Northern California, and working with the townsfolk and some of your local businesses over the last few months has been absolutely wonderful. So if the council has any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them.
Do you have dates?
We do have dates. It'll be the week before the Fourth of July next summer. And I believe you got some of our pamphlets and my cards, so certainly, if any questions come up over the next several months, let me know. I'm, Mayor Sue, I'm sure it's not the last time we'll speak, of course.
Hope not. I'm not going in a cave, though.
We'll show you the really, really big ones with footpaths and handrails. You'll be fine there.
Oh, I've gone to Shasta Caverns.
Just a question. What's the estimate, approximate number of people you think might be attending?
In a non-pandemic year, I would tell you 1,100. COVID has made that variable very strange for us. We did cancel our event this summer, which was scheduled to be in West Virginia. Next year, we're told that people are either dying to do something that they haven't been able to do for now two years, or they'll still be scared to travel. So I can't give you an honest answer because none of our formulas work under this scenario. We have not been here before.
And will you be going in town in groups at certain places or just...
Oh, you can expect to see quite an uptick in local shopping, definitely, particularly in the service industries. You know, obviously, a large part of our group stay in hotels, and we're working with the Chamber to, you know, make that list popularized to our national membership. Some of our people will also be camping at the college campus, and I expect that, you know, our stragglers that have not booked hotels were probably going to be into, you know, some of them are going to end up driving to Dunsmere or Wyrika. You have my contact information? We are very much looking forward to coming here. You have any questions, certainly, by all means, reach out at any time.
Do you get to use the dorms?
We will be using the dorms at the campus, but it's nowhere near enough population there to hold everybody.
No. Okay.
All right, thank you so much.
Will CLOS be preparing meals, or have you guys got that far?
We're still working that out. The, our size is a little bit larger than their concern for their capacity, so it may be a mix and match of some of their facilities complemented with some of the facilities that we have to bring in as mobile kitchens. We're not really, we haven't solved all that yet.
Okay.
I can't tell you the amount of fun it's been planning a large mass gathering in the middle of a pandemic.
In the middle of a, non-mask gathering.
Not an experience I want to go through again.
Are you, are you finding any, like, a community presentation regarding what you're expecting, Tom?
Thank you actually, thank you actually for bringing that up. We aren't confirmed on this yet, but we are very heavily working on putting together a public screening of an IMAX film dedicated to cave exploration that would be opened as probably a fundraiser for the college and opened for the general public. We don't have all the details on that yet, but yes, it is something that we're working on. All right.
No.
Thank you so much.
See you next summer.
Thank you, Matt.
Looking forward to it.
I'm excited for you guys, too.
Thank you.
I love it when you lie to me, Susan.
But do you want to go in caves? You do? Okay, well, then he's the guy. He brought two friends.
I do have some tablets on the table back here for anybody who...
We have some.
Yeah. Those are cool.
Learn something new every day. New word for me.
I just got out of a cave, actually. I'm Stephen Bryan. I'm the Regional Director for South Siskiyou County for the Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborative, which are the family community resource centers throughout the county. And particularly, Weed, Mount Shasta, Dunsmere, and we do services to McLeod through their schools, and we work with their other organizations there. We're here tonight to talk about Read Across Siskiyou, which is our annual reading event where we provide books to children throughout the county, age zero to five, for free. And we all, it's the same book to every child. And in the past, as you know, a lot of you have been guest readers before, we've had guest readers go out to all the schools and preschools, read to the children. It's going to look a lot different this year, so we'll keep you posted when that happens. The books just arrived this afternoon in Wyrika, so I don't have any for you today, but I will definitely come back and provide the council some, the book, I'm sorry, the title of the book?
The Lion and the Mouse.
The Lion and the Mouse, I'm sorry. So this is, this is Allison. She's with First Five Siskiyou. This is Jessica. She's one of our families that joins us for our parenting classes and is a participant with the Family Community Resource Center here.
So she wanted to come along, so I said, sure. She's never been here. So she lives down the street.
So we wanted her to read the proclamation, if that's okay?
Yes.
Okay, great.
The proclamation of the 13th Annual Read Across Siskiyou Event, sponsored by First Five Siskiyou Children and Families Commission. Whereas, the ultimate goal of the First Five Siskiyou Children and Families Commission is that all Siskiyou children from prenatal through five years of age will be healthy, ready to learn, and support in safe nurturing families and communities. And whereas, children in Siskiyou County from prenatal through five years of age have a successful start in life, daily reading with supportive and nurturing families, caregivers, educators, and community leaders. And whereas, early literacy is a foundation for academic, social, emotional, and economic success. And whereas, First Five, in partnership with Family Community Resource Centers, dedicates one day each year to promote literacy by the same titled book to be read by guest readers to children in various preschools, kindergartens, childcare centers, libraries throughout Siskiyou County on the same day, and provide each child with a copy of that book to home. Therefore, the city of Weed hereby proclaims November 18, 2020, as the 13th anniversary of Read Across Siskiyou. And be it that this body enthusiastically endorses... And be it that this body enthusiastically endorses daily reading, singing, and playing with children as a critical foundation for the healthy development of lifelong success.
Thank you.
I've heard you become a reader. Thank you, Jessica.
Steve probably knows. How do you, how do you get to be a reader?
I'd like to become a reader. I've heard about it, but I didn't know the channels.
You're a reader.
What day is?
I don't know, so it's November eight?
Wednesday, November eighteenth.
Eighteenth, sorry. So.
No, no, so, so, I have even the smallest creatures can be of great help to the giant. The lion turned to the mouse and said, dear friend, I was foolish to ridicule you for being small. You helped me by saving my life after all. So the moral is kindness is never wasted, everything has its own value. So usually, I would never tell the end of a movie, but in this case, I think we can.
Have, have we figured out how the structure is going to, what the structure is going to look like?
Yeah, so Stacy and Ken, um, we're meeting together as a collaborative with First Five and figuring that out. So this is obviously a new time and era for us, so we want all the children and readers both to be safe and staff at the schools and preschools, so we don't wanna bring people in and out.
There'll be some, I'm sorry, there'll be some online, um, readings and different types of things. So we're adapting, as we have been for a while now, so.
Yeah, give us a couple of weeks, and I'll definitely add you to the list, too. If anybody is the, I know Bob always reads.
Yeah, I always like to do it.
Yeah, so I'll add you all to the list, and, or everybody but Kim. I didn't mean to call you out there. I just have one last thing I wanted to say about Read Across Siskiyou, and then I was hoping, because I haven't seen you in a while, if I could give you a brief update on the resource center and what's been going on, so. Thirteenth Annual, this is the thirteenth annual Read Across Siskiyou, and early experiences matter, and that's what this is all about. Daily reading, singing, talking with children is essential for supporting child development. Uh, when we read with children, we expose them to new words, new ideas, and share the love of reading and quality time. Uh, this annual event demonstrates the commitment to investments in early literacy by the Family Community Resource Centers and First Five Siskiyou. So thank you for being a part of it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you.
So, like I said, Jessica is one of our families here in our nurturing parenting series. It's a parenting class that goes on Wednesday nights. Um, it's been going on for three years consecutively now.
And, and it's on Zoom, it's online.
Yep, so when the pandemic started in March, we immediately switched to, uh, Zoom meetings, so there wasn't any, uh, hiccups or spaces, and we've had pretty good attendance, and I think.
Yeah, great educational stuff. It totally changed my focus, and I don't have, it's half, seventy-five percent of my problems with my son are gone.
Nice.
That's huge.
That's good to hear.
So, uh, we do evidence-based classes like that throughout the county. Uh, the one here, um, is specific, uh, curriculum. We have one that's ongoing in Monahue, which is for parents in recovery. We have, uh, Family Huey, we're starting in Dunsmere, which is a new program out of Hawaii, where we teach families how to support themselves and build their own groups within the community and not have to rely on us or other people to bring them together, to give them the tools and the skills and let them build the community. And then, uh, in Malchasta, we're doing a Parenting the Second Time Around series, which is for grandparents and relative caregivers. We know that's, a lot of that is going on here in Siskiyou County. We started that last year, and we have a really good group of, uh, grandparents that meet, so we keep offering series. So this is a new series, actually, with a new curriculum we just came up with, so.
And I just wanna add that some of the Zoom classes, even though they're Zoom, it really helps the isolation factor, because a lot of parents, um, can't, you know. That Jessica shared with me personally, that she really looks forward to. Provided a network of, of, you know, friends and, and. Wouldn't think that Zoom might provide that, but it, but it seems to, so.
Yeah, I've actually had one, one of the moms reach out to me and said, if I knew it was gonna be like this, I would've got everybody's phone numbers at the beginning of this classes six months ago, so I was able to help her reconnect with some of the families. And so those are some of the things we do to help strengthen the community and help support parents and families and build children up and help provide a, a, a special outcome for them later in life. The earlier you read, the, the better outcomes you have going through life. They base jails, on how many jails they're billed in America, on what the reading levels are at third grade. So, if you can, we can get all these kids proficient by third grade, take all the money we can save in the city and put that money into other things, too. So, that's just, uh, my little preventative spiel there. Um, the two-one-one boxes, going back to what Ken was talking about earlier. So when the pandemic started, there was, uh, grant funding provided from O E S, two-one-one, and United Way, and they put it into these food boxes. Um, they reached out to the Family Resource Centers and other, uh, community organizations like the, like Denise Spade and the Siskiyou Food Alliance here in Weed, and we all collaborated together to get those out into the community. Originally, they were specifically for seniors that were homebound and individuals that had medical conditions where they couldn't shop for themselves. Um, so the boxes were, uh, what's inside them is three to four days' worth of food for three to four people. So, um, we just got another seventy-five boxes delivered last week, and, uh, so we're, we're well-stocked. Denise does a great job up the hill, so we just wanted to have some food here downtown. Um, some of the seniors and other individuals, it's hard for them to get up to the hill and back, and during the pandemic, we just thought it would be the best prudent idea to have the food here at the resource center. So then we started working with Belcampo and bringing in eggs. Um, I just dropped off eight more cases this morning, and I think they're all gone already.
They are gone.
By three o'clock, they're all gone. So each box has six flats of thirty, so that's a hundred and eighty eggs, so eight times a hundred and eighty, so eleven hundred and sixty eggs this, today I dropped off here in Weed. I've been doing that every week. Uh, Mike Rodriguez has been helping me. I know several of you are familiar with Mike Rodriguez. He's been, since Mike's retired, he's become my number one volunteer in, uh, Malchasta. So, uh, we do that through all the resource centers. I've also been providing those eggs to McLeod, too, to their resource network and their food bank. In July alone, even with the pandemic, we served six hundred and seventy, uh, community members here in Weed. So, that speaks volume to what's going on here in our community and the importance that we all work together and, uh, just support each other as much as possible. So, that's, do you have any questions, or?
Yes, I, I have one. What, what is the, uh, address for the Wednesday Zoom meetings?
So you had to.
How would you, what's the process to?
Uh, so the best way to do it is to call the resource center here in Weed at nine-three-eight-nine-nine-one-four. What they have to do is pre-register, and then we'll send them the Zoom link. So, for security reasons, we don't wanna promote the Zoom link.
Thank you.
Yep, and we don't record these sessions. These are private bonding moments for the parents, so we don't wanna mess up that, so.
So, you know, we have the senior van?
Yes.
And one of our drivers, since the pandemic, rather than picking up the seniors and taking them to the store, he goes to the food bank, he goes to the store for them, he goes to the pharmacy, and then he just delivers them to, he has, like, certain people that he delivers every week, and then he randomly has other houses that he knows personally that need food, and he brings. So, if the, if they're having problems getting their boxes, let us know, and then on Tuesdays and Thursdays, he can, we can deliver those with the others that he's out doing.
We kinda already went there, sorry, Kim.
Okay.
David is great. So I know David, and he calls me sometimes, so we've been working, so we have a list of all the seniors, obviously, because of the Senior Nutrition Program. Every week, since the COVID started, we call all these seniors, every week, check in with them, what do they need? We also, with Dave's help, are able to get those eggs and food boxes. He has been, like, he'll call us, be like, this person needs this, or, you know, ex, yeah, he's awesome. He really cares and goes above and beyond for the community of Weed, but he also, he was my, my child's, uh, music instructor at Big Springs Elementary, so he taught my son how to play guitar, so he's got a warm spot in my heart, too. But thank you, Kim, that's awesome. I mean, so working with Parks and Recs has been a blessing for the resource center here, too, because with Parks and Recs' help, we were able to do the Summer Fund Program for our families here in South County. We were able to use the pool in the afternoons. The kids were able to swim every day for two hours, I believe, in the afternoon, yeah. So they would rotate, because of COVID, a few of them would go in the pool all the time. But also, Parks and Recs provides, uh, a space for us when we can meet in person to do senior lunches. We do trainings and other programs there, so thank you. We're very happy with our relationship.
And we can remind everybody that from zero to five years old, they can sign up for the Dolly Parton Library.
Absolutely, so, uh, Dolly Parton Imagination Library, um, every month, a child aged zero to five will get a book sent to their home. Um, it's age-appropriate, vetted books, um, and they change as they progress, so.
And they can sign up on imaginationlibrary.com, and you can just put your address and the county there, and so it makes it very easy.
Yep, and if you have a problem signing up online, you can always come to the resource center. We have applications there.
Imaginationlibrary.com, yes.
So I just wanna give you guys some kudos, because, um, with my brand-new grandchild, who is in Coeur d'Alene, big city, and grandparents in Spokane, big city, neither one of them can get the imagination books because they're not in the Siski, those two cities are not part of their network.
It's by county, yeah.
And so, here we are in little Siskiyou County, in our little town of Weed, and I can sign up for him, but they can't, they're there, so I just think.
Yeah, give kudos to the senior project.
Yes.
Yes, and there, and there's a lot of volunteers and community service organizations, and so First Five is kinda leads the, the collaborative effort there with, along with the Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborative, and so I'm pretty in, in awe of it, too. And if every single county in the state gets it, Dolly Parton will come and play.
In Siskiyou County?
Yes.
Oh, well, it should be that, because we're the, because we're, we're doing a pretty good job, so.
Well, it started here, too, right?
Yeah.
So, it started here in Siskiyou County.
I have to look that up.
Yeah, no, but it's by county, it's by county, though, so every county has to find an organization to step up to the plate.
A nonprofit.
To be the representative for that area, so. And also Delta Kappa Gamma, I don't know if most people know who that is, but they're a big part of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, which is a group of retired teachers, some are active teachers, um, but they handle a lot of the bulk work of fundraising for Dolly Parton Imagination Library.
Well, and, um, Sandy, was it last year? The Weed Rotary donate, made a major donation to the Imagination Library for the children in Weed, so there's, there is, there is books out there for the kids in Weed.
Absolutely.
We can't get them all signed up, but we can certainly.
Yes.
Pay for them to get the books.
Weed Rotary is always there for the resource center, too, so, thank you.
Thank you so much, and we look forward to getting the signed proclamation, so I'll, I'll deal with that later. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
Okay, moving.
I'm sorry, I have one last thing.
Yeah?
I apologize. Uh, we're doing disaster preparedness trainings throughout the county. I've already been doing them in Dunsmere and Malchasta. I'd like to start doing them here and for the community of Weed, too. I can do them for organizations, I can do them for individual community members. We could do them on Zoom, we can do them in small groups together. Um, we're, we're really, we're flexible, and we'll meet people where they're at to get the trainings done. But this is, as you know, this is very important for the area we live in. It gives them, um, all the things to be thinking about and start making, uh, plan, work your plan with your family, uh, your friends. This is about getting people to start looking after their neighbors, uh, communicate more with their neighbors, get to know each other like it used to be. So, um, that's a lot about what we talked about this training. We have to look out for each other. It's a small rural area, and fires can come through very quickly. As you know, we're sitting in a spot just a few years ago that.
How long is the, is the training?
So the training, it, um, we partner with Rescue Ranch, so if, if the individual has pets, we put them in the pet training with us, so that's about an hour. If they don't have pets, it's forty-five minutes to an hour, depending on how many questions. So I brought these, I'm gonna leave with you.
Yeah.
Um, inside here is a flyer. The, it's an open-ended training flyer. You just call and say, I wanna get on the list, and then when we get enough people on the list, then we schedule a training.
Some of the books are at the Montgomery Market.
Are they? These guys, okay, great. Yeah, so we're not the only, uh, nonprofit that's part of this grant, but we are the ones doing the trainings. So, uh, Rescue Ranch and some other organizations in North County were doing them, too. So I'll leave those with.
For you?
With Sandy.
And then hopefully, maybe I could come to Rotary and do a presentation, too.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, sorry.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the regular agenda. Uh, the second reading and adoption of the Uncodified Ordinance Number Four, six-two-dash-twenty-twenty.
Thank you, Mayor and Honorable Counsel. Yeah, this, um, this is the last step, uh, in a long chain of hearings for this development agreement between Shasta Jefferson Growth Business and the City of Weed. Tonight, there's really not much more input from staff as far as the technical, um, attributes of a development agreement, but I just wanna follow, uh, close the record up a little bit and make sure the right things are on the record. Basically, we've had a long history. We had a hearing, two hearings at the Planning Commission, and kinda three, I guess, before you guys. But this is the last, this is the second and final reading of a ordinance. Uh, it's not necessarily an ordinance, but they, in the state of California, development agreements are adopted as ordinances. This decision, I wanna make sure this goes on the record, is not really for, um, the actual project. This is actually just a pro, uh, approving an agreement between the two parties so that would allow the applicant to apply for a larger development project, which would be secret, will be, um, subject to CEQA. This decision, however, is not subject to CEQA, essentially because it falls within the common sense exception stated in the CEQA guidelines, one-five-oh-six-one subsection B subsection three, and it says that CEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. Where it can be seen with certainty that there is no possibility that the activity in question may have a significant effect on the environment, the activity is not subject to CEQA. That's the nature of the development agreement. This still, this does not terminate the CEQA process on this, on the overall development project. We're just at the stage of allowing them, by agreement, to apply for and submit applications for upcoming zoning and whatnot. So, and after tonight, um, usually, these are, um, pretty short hearings. They're not really even a hearing. It will be about sixty days until the agreement is actually cleared, but that's it. If you have any questions of me for tonight, but we have a notice of exemption along with this, um, tonight, so. That's it.
No questions? No? The second reading.
Do we have a second reading?
Uh, Ms. Mayor, I move that, uh, we, uh, adopt, uh, ordinance number four-six-two-dash-two-zero-two-zero by title only.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Ms. Mayor, I move that we adopt, uh, ordinance number four-six-two-dash-two-zero-two-zero for the development agreement between the city and Shasta Jefferson Growth Incorporated, and adopt the notice of exemption. I don't think that we need the number there, do we?
Do we? Need to read all those numbers?
No.
Okay.
All seconded.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Moving on, second reading and adoption of ordinance number four-six-three-dash-two-zero-two-zero.
Thank you again. Um, this, this one is, of course, was a little bit different. We, we have, uh, the state legislation passed ordinances to further the rules and regulations that cities can, um, employ for allowing secondary housing units. Um, we actually did this once already in two thousand seventeen. Um, they did some further clarifications last fall, and they became effective in, uh, January two thousand twenty. Essentially, it just makes it, removes more barriers for people to have accessory dwelling units for, um, it's the state's way of, uh, helping with the housing crisis in the state. This, too, is exempt from CEQA, be, basically for the same reason. Um, it's the same section, uh, doesn't really have anything to do with the environment. We already allow, um, housing, and we allow you, uh, secondary housing units. Um, this just changes the policy that we follow to do that. It doesn't cause any physical impacts to the environment. It doesn't cause any physical impacts to the environment. So it's the same exemption, and this is a second reading. So in 60 days, our law will become official. And that's it. Is there any questions about this? I think we covered the bases last meeting. So without any questions, I'm just gonna--
Nope.
I can, I'll move the induction. It's a reading in full of the body of ordinance number four-six-three-dash-2020. We waive said ordinance being read and adopted by title only.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
I'll move adoption of ordinance number four-six-three-dash-2020. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Weed revising chapter 18.52 of the Weed Municipal Code in regards to accessory dwelling units be adopted.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item C, City Hall Holiday Schedule.
Madam Mayor and Counsel, tonight before you is a proposed schedule for the week of Christmas through New Year's. Staff and I have discussed the possibility of closing non-public safety offices that week. By allowing the employees at City Hall and Public Works to take three days of vacation on December 28th, 29th, and 30th, it accomplishes multiple goals, including burning off about $10,000 in vacation accruals off the books, and we would save approximately about $2,000 in utilities in this building, as well as in Public Works as well. And this is something that a lot of cities throughout California, throughout the country, quite honestly, are starting to adopt, because that is typically one of the slowest times of the year for doing business at City Hall. And however, I'd like the public to know that this does not affect public safety offices at all. Our fire and police emergency management will still be in full effect. It does not also affect any sort of emergency calls for water, sewer, sanitation, nor will it affect our snow removal. All of our people will still be on call and still be ready to go in an event that, it essentially affects the staff here at City Hall and Public Works. And again, the Public Works guys, in essence, will still be on call in case they are needed, so.
Oh, I'll make a motion to pass.
No questions on it?
Yeah.
Anybody second? Kim?
I'll second.
Oh, we had to move?
I didn't want to get a motion there.
Do we have?
I will.
Take action. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you just, you make a motion to approve the schedule.
The schedule.
And Ken seconded. It's been motioned and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. It's passed. Have a nice holiday week.
We'll try. Go ahead.
Okay, item D, renewal of agreement between the city and Weed, Rec, and Parks District.
Yes, Madam Mayor, annually since the 2000--
Don't we have to leave?
No, we don't have to leave, do we?
Yeah.
Bob, do they need to-- Yeah.
Oh, you want to sit out there?
Stacy, you're in control.
You're in charge, Stacy.
To the bathroom.
But we know we may have to ask you a question, though, so.
Oh.
So, before you tonight, and the reason why, if the audience is wondering why Ms. Green and Mayor Tavallaro stepped down, is because Mayor is on the board with the Parks and Rec District, and Ms. Green is, Councilmember Green is the executive director for the Parks and Rec Department. So, before you tonight is the annual agreement that we provide, since the one-quarter penny sales tax was passed in 2014, to provide program services for the Weed Recreation and Parks District, as well as for the Senior Transportation Program. So this is a routine contract that you see each year.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, I want to make a couple comments. One, that we need to clean up the language between, on this, on the contract, I believe. The contract, what I am reading states between Weed, Rec, and Park District and City of Weed and Senior Community Resource Collaborative. And it's just the Weed, Rec, and Park on this one. Also, on the, it says, "We'll consider fiscal year 2020, 2020 through '21 not to exceed 20,000." I'm seeing two amounts on the, in the discussion here, one for 20,000 and one for 24,000. So--
The 20,000 was for the program services. The 24,000 was for the--
Bus, or the transportation.
Transportation, yeah. That should have stated that. Apologize.
Okay, so as long as that's going to stay in that contract?
Yes.
Is that what we're going on?
Yes.
And then we're going to shorten it down just to the Weed, Rec, and Park?
Yes.
So the correct amount is 20,000?
Correct amount is 20 plus 24.
Twenty-four. Twenty for the program services and 24 for the transportation.
For the Senior Transportation Program?
Correct.
I would like to see a listing of the programs, but I mean, I guess we could have them do that at a later point.
Yep. With those amendments?
With those amendments, I'd recommend approval. I don't know if anybody wants to comment out in the audience, but--
I'll second. It's been moved and seconded, that we will accept the renewal of the agreement as amended. Any nays? Well, how about affirmative? Vote for it.
Aye.
Aye.
Any negative? Okay, the motion has passed. We can ask our folks to come back with the corrections as noted.
We'll make sure those are--
Okay, we're good?
We're good.
On to consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as written. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nope. Good.
It's not dark outside yet.
I know, it's--
Hold on, we can wait till seven.
Three minutes, 6:30. Staff reports?
I had just a couple of quick things.
You nut first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, then I'll back up. I'll back the bus up.
Got all excited. Justin, do you have, now you're last. Justin, do you have anything to tell us? Yeah, because I read the paper. I do. And there was a lot of things in there that you guys did, and we need to know those things.
He's got a list today.
No, I just brought the stats, in case you guys want to know any stats. It's just for the month. What part, which article in the paper did you want to discuss?
No, that you went to, all the calls that you went to and--
Yeah, we went to 1,868 calls last month. Officer-initiated and calls for service. There was a significant increase in calls for service. We were up 171 over the prior year for September. There was a significant increase in reports, 14. I mean, for a small agency, that's quite a bit. That's not, you know, a larger agency, that's one day. But yeah, and our rest were up by nine. But there's other things that we are down in that it reflects, you know, obviously with the still-ongoing furloughs, our traffic stops are still down, and more officer discretionary things are down, because we don't have that extra eight hours per week that officers are doing proactive things. These were mostly response calls. I just want to speak to you a little bit about the comments on the park. I have confirmed with North County agencies that there are flag football games occurring up there currently. So it's not just us, so.
In Wairika also?
In Wairika.
Not in Mount Shasta?
I didn't--
She's going to call tomorrow.
Yeah, I didn't speak with Mount Shasta, but I did confirm that the North County is having flag football events, and they have not received any complaints as of yet, so. But again, going back to the masks, that would be, at this point, it would be up to the city to make an ordinance that would be under the administrative citation, I believe that would be the best option, if that's the route Counsel chooses to go. Okay? Any questions?
1,800 calls.
That's 60--
Incidents. Calls for service were 815. So, and that, I mean, that can be anything from an animal call to, the more significant calls are, actually, we currently have an officer who's involved in an outside agency investigation, one's from the Bay Area, one's from Oregon. He is working on two separate cases and working with allied agencies in those jurisdictions on an investigation. So I mean, that counts as one call for service. You don't see all the hours that are put into that one call.
Is there anything in there that's troubling for our count?
No, I don't, I don't see, I mean, they go, you know, what we are seeing significantly, and I don't think we're the only agency, is an increase in what we, you see, you see the obstructing and resisting. There has been an increase in that over the past couple of years, and in the last six months. Six, people are not--
Stressed out.
Well, it's not stressed out. They're just, there's a trend that, you know, to buck the authority and to go, you know, they believe they have a right, and they do. The right is to challenge it in court. It's not to challenge the officer at the scene making the decision. So that, but we are seeing an increase in those. Personally, I see those in the stats, seem to be awfully, charged awfully more, a lot more than they were, you know, previous years.
Good to know.
Keith, we had talked earlier, a couple months ago, we had kind of mentioned the point that people, some, don't have anything to lose. Do you think that the problems that you're having with people are that they sense that they don't have anything to lose now? I mean, as far as, there was a time when you did something like that, you'd be in jail for quite a while.
Yeah. I don't think it's they have anything to lose. They don't have any threat of repercussion.
That's what I mean.
It's on the ballot. You spoke to the importance of voting. I'm not going to tell people how to vote, but no bail is on the ballot this November. So California decreased bail to zero bail in many instances on particularly nonviolent crimes. But to a victim, you know, if you steal somebody's car, that's, to some people, that is a violent crime. That's their only source of getting to work, or, so, you know, that was brought up at the county level in the state discussion as to how this has gone since COVID and the no bail, to try to keep people out of the jails and the spread of COVID. They wanted some specific circumstances. We arrested an individual down, down the street for stealing a car. He was booked into Wairika jail, and then he stole a car in Wairika and drove, was arrested in Ashland-Medford area. So that's, that's what we're seeing, is it's, there's no repercussion, no sense that they're going to get in trouble for what they're doing.
Next time, save yourself the trouble to drive to Ashland, what you do not do.
Yeah, yeah, so.
You seem to be keeping a good, good track of, and I think it's important that we understand that we want to stay abreast to any changes regarding this, because, like I mentioned before, I think it's damn serious that when people don't have, I said nothing to lose, but the repercussion. You know, when that happens, I mean, there's, there's an element in our society that is going to be moving through and changing social structure here, if it could, I mean, effectively, at least.
Sure. And as you've spoken before, I think it falls back on our community. Our community, the people will decide what is acceptable and what's not, and we need to come together as a community to express that and make--
Put some time into it. I'm sorry I haven't yet.
No, I understand, so. Anything else?
Nope, thank you. That was 27 calls, average of 27 calls a day.
A lot.
Chief, do you have anything? Oh, you do?
Yeah.
That's all right. I have a new goal.
Three minutes?
Yeah.
Start the clock, Sandy.
Okay, we had, had 56 EMS calls this last month. One traffic collision, which is rare to only have one. Eight fires, three of those structured fires. One wildland fire up on 97. And four other fires, and those could be anything from, you know, warming fire to whatever, just not a structure. 1210, our engine that we had the contract with the college. We utilized that from 914 to 917 at the college for hose and nozzle class, and we did have an operator each time. We did bill him for that. I did attend the EMS World Summit, like I told you I was going to do, and I was on a Zoom meeting with a bunch of physicians across the world, actually, even some from Germany. It was pretty interesting. And the whole talk was about the innovations in Narcan in the field, and they wanted the perspective of EMS of how it works, so that's why they had me on there. They had other EMS providers as well, but it was pretty interesting. So I appreciate you guys paid for that class for me, and it was great. I'm in the class right now. Brian and I are at the Fire Show West. It's all on Zoom, so it's usually held in Nevada, but we're doing that the next two weeks, so I appreciate that, too. I did come and talk to Rotary one day about wildland defensible space, and gave them an update on the major fires. And I just finished teaching CPR, AED, and first aid to the police department and dispatchers. And I've talked Justin into having do the training for Narcan, to have that put into each police car. And we'll do that training next and have one, a couple Narcans in each police car, so. Appreciate that, so. That's it.
Thank you. Craig, would you like to say anything? Yes, you have something to say, too. I do. No.
We're planning our Davis Street project starting Monday, so, and that'll only take two days, and--
Two days?
Yeah. It's going to be quick. So, well, and then you'll have to raise the manholes and stuff, that's us. But the city was notified this week that we were approved for the additional EDA funding for Vista Drive. So we've got, we're going to have to go back out the bid, and then when those bids come in, all the paperwork should be in order, and we, hopefully this time, can award a bid, so. This, next summer. It's going to take two years to get it done.
Okay. See, you did have some good stuff. Emily, do you have any good stuff?
You seem to tell us whether or not we have stuff to say, so.
I, do you have any good stuff?
Yeah.
You haven't told me any good news this week. Do you have some?
Uh, good news this week. On vacation.
That's good news.
Yeah. So I'll be gone this second to last week of October. Sadly, the phone always works. Always works. No, nothing too exciting. Just vacation. Guys helped me out and got all the meter reads and stuff done, so that's all taken care of. So Diana should be okay, and we're still plugging away at billings, et cetera. The, and Sandy may have, was going to talk on this, I don't know, but the ballot box here in the office does accept from any district?
So-- Yeah, there's a ballot box in the--
Even if people are traveling through or are coming in here to town to go grocery shopping or whatever, they can put their ballot here. They came by and checked it today, so they come by, I think she said, once a week?
Once a week right now.
Is it one in Weed, or Siskiyou County, or is it--
Yes, yes.
We got that out in the paper.
I just didn't know if we wanted to, it was kind of a Sandy thing.
I, I put it in my letter.
Laura put it out in the paper, in the--
Yeah, I did see it in the paper.
And I think Laura also mentioned that if you, if it is a mail-in, the postage is already paid, so--
Yes.
There really should be no reason for people not to vote.
Laura brought it in last Monday or the Monday before. It is secure, and it is under surveillance, so people should feel very comfortable. If they are not comfortable mailing their ballots and dropping it in the box here.
Do you have anything else, Sandy?
I do not.
Okay. Bob Winston, do you have anything else, anything you'd like to say? Okay. Now it's your turn.
She's psyching me out over here.
You forgot what you were going to say.
Well, I'm going to go real quick here, and, but Craig did mention-- Well, I'm gonna go real quick here and, but Craig did mention the Vista Drive, which just put in perspective, that's nearly a $6.8 million project. That's gonna be a significant improvement for the South Weed area. I mean, that's, that's a big thing that we're gonna have down there and it's gonna help a lot with the wear and tear that we're currently seeing out there with all the, the big trucks, so, and I just want to let everybody know, I mean, that was a, a team effort between, you know, Craig and Sandy was a huge help, too, and they would come to me and say, we need to get this letter, and so I would crank out stuff because it had to be from the city manager. So, we were working really hard to get that done together, and we were keeping our fingers crossed for about two weeks because we kept waiting for the call, and we finally got the call and it was really good news, so... Also, speaking of Sandy, you forgot to mention, HDL, we're in the process right now of putting that together to where our businesses can get their business licenses online. We're getting close to getting that done, big help. Sales tax and TOT, I sent everybody a report, you guys probably have seen it, it was actually in the paper, too, kind of a, a pretty in-depth as far as where our sales and TOT, but basically, if you look at it this way, we're still losing about $20,000 a month compared to last year when you add sales tax and TOT. So, we're, we're down significantly, just in the last five months, we've lost almost $100,000 than we had last year at this time, so we're not gaining anything, so... But, but we're, we're gonna try to shoot, you know, we're gonna start working on the budget here pretty soon and Emily and I are talking about furloughs and, and what we're gonna do starting the calendar year in, in January. Our goal is to try to taper those down, but it all depends on where we are with our revenue. Measures B and M, we put brochures in every water bill that went out this last week, yeah, they went out last week, didn't they? So, everybody should have gotten a brochure, a pamphlet, just explaining what those two measures entail to inform our public. And speaking of informing our public, I didn't know if Richard was gonna be here from the chamber tonight, so I'll go ahead and still as thunder because we need to get this out there. There's gonna be a candidate forum on October the 19th from 5:00 to 7:00 at the community center. So, Monday, October the 19th, the five candidates that are up for council will be there for that. Public is welcome, they'll be socially distancing the seats and making sure everything is kind of like it was when we had it, our council meeting the other one time, so... Climate Tech, I am still waiting, officials from Climate Tech are supposed to be getting back with me. We signed a waiver to allow them to look at all of our energy bills, and they're supposed to be going through and performing an audit to see if they're gonna marry up from what they told us we were gonna be saving to what we are actually saving. Steve mentioned real quickly about the fire. I, I will tell you, since I've been here, we've had, I think it's our fourth house fire in six months, so, and, and I, I will tell you also, when I, when I see these fires coming, and if you know, saw the one on Evergreen, it was last Thursday, or we could go today, pretty remarkable when you see what Cal Fire came in and dropped the buckets, the, you know, the water, it was, it was pretty, pretty fast and furious around there, and our guys did a terrific job, Chief Mayberry, our guys, as well as Assistant Chief Carter and, and old Jack was there, too, on the truck, and he was nice and sweaty when I got there, but, and Craig's guys out there, you know, working the streets, blocking the streets, making sure we got the barriers up to keep the folks out. It was, it was good to watch our whole public safety and public, and, and Public Works crew in action out there. And real quickly on the can of trading, I'll, I'll send you the actual email I got yesterday or a couple of days ago from Mr. Fine. They are in the process right now of putting the finishing touches. They did hire a firm, I think it's called, the name of the firm is Perfect Union, I think it's what the name of the, the company was, but they are gonna be doing, putting the finishing touches over the last two weeks of October as far as the construction and the interior stuff and the stocking, and they have assured me that they will be open by November 1st, so, I guess we'll see. So, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Kim, did you think of something?
I did. So, I don't know if any of you guys have noticed that there's work going on at Sons of Itley, Phil. So, a group of local community gentlemen had gotten together and brought in the Rec Department, the city, some local businesses. We've applied for some grants, we made it to the top 10 last year, so we'll be reapplying to redo the entire Sons ballpark. Right now, they're doing leveling, so lots of sprinklers, pipe's broken and won't be fixing that soon. But the idea is that we will have American Legion baseball here again. And then the other thing is, I don't get cable, does, do any of you guys have cable? I just wonder if you've seen the interview that we did on Measure M? I have not seen it, so I just wanted to know if anybody has seen it.
On channel 15?
On channel 15, yeah.
I don't get channel 15.
I don't either.
I do, but I haven't seen it.
You haven't seen it yet?
Is there a way that we could put it on the city side?
I would, I would think.
Who, who did the interview?
Channel 15.
Is that Richard's group?
No, yeah, but it was, it wasn't Richard, it was a gentleman that came over to the, I'll ask Richard who it was. Yeah, and they could share the link, okay.
Then, question, are they re, are they moving the diamond? It appeared, I saw that they took the picture mound out and they...
Yeah, but they're leveling the diamond, and there will be a slight shift, but not a huge one.
And around home, I don't see that around home has been, they put, moved a stake, but where the batter's box was, we have, we compacted about 14 inches under there, and I don't think they've gotten to that yet, that will...
Probably not.
They're not gonna move, they're, they're gonna put it back the same place it was?
As far as I know. The left filled fence is 63 inches lower than home plate.
Yes, yes, it is. We, we had, matter of fact...
And unless you actually walk out there, because I finally did it last week, you don't see all those humps and mounds in the infield and the outfield, and it makes a huge difference.
It's, it's nice.
And then I believe it's gonna be an all grass infield, and then hopefully the, if we get the grant this year, we will be able to use that to redo the locker rooms and the concession stand and the bleachers.
Nice work, thank you.
Yeah, we've got, there's a gentleman from G and G Hardware in Wyreka who actually used to work for Scott's Turf. Unfortunately, he can't help us with our grant application, but he brought in a load of topsoil and he is supplying all the seating for the, for the grass.
We did that, wouldn't, wouldn't be laying sod 40 years ago?
It was 1978.
Yeah, 40 years ago.
Okay, anybody else? All right. Is it you?
I make a motion before I do that, I think we should understand that Chuck Sutton is smiling at us right now from up above, and I make a motion, we adjourn. We're out here before 7:00.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you, guys.